Day it is. So, good evening and welcome, everybody, to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, October twenty third. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for all of you who came to join us tonight, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Hey, I would entertain an emotion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Moving second. Are any comments, questions, or concerns? Very none? It's adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, council. I appreciate that. We're moving on to public comments. I will read our long missive here, which, as we indicated last meeting, I think the introduction takes longer than three minutes allowed to each speaker. State law, RCW forty-two seventeen A dot five-five-five does not allow the use of public facilities to promote or oppose ballot measures promoting or opposing the city's levy lid lift ballot measure during a council meeting would be use of a public facility in violation of state law. This includes comments made to the public during the public comment section of a council meeting. The statute, excuse me, does not, however, does not limit your ability to support or oppose a ballot measure on your own time using your own resources. The council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor or council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, the mayor or presiding officer may request the speakers suspend their comments. Council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute timeline. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Sarah Phillips, welcome. Please join us. I just remind everybody what I just said about the levy. It's really important to recognize that.
And you talked about Lake Forest Climate Action, uh, LFP Climate Hub and the relationship between the Climate Hub and the Climate Action Committee. And I just wanted to say we officially opened the Climate Committee, if it's Climate Hub, on Sunday, the twelfth. I know some of you were there. I was not. I was ill, but it was a fabulous event. Somebody FaceTimed, so I got to see what was going on. And it really is a year-long project that was adopted by the Climate Committee as one of their projects. Three of our members, four of our members have been critically engaged in this process. Dana Campbell, Mimi Bertram, Sandy Weber. At the opening event, Councilmember Dambowski came up and he made our student representative a rock star. Called her up without any notification, any prelude and got her up there and she was fabulous. She just talked about the importance of climate and she and her colleagues have set up a Climate Action Club at Shorecrest. And so I did want to say we've made some progress in a variety of areas. One is we've become a nonprofit. And the reason we became a nonprofit was we were ineligible for four culture funding that was absolutely perfect for us. They wouldn't let us use a fiscal conduit. We had to become our own nonprofit and we have done that. And Councilmember Dambowski made a twenty thousand dollar contribution to the Lake Forest Park Climate Hub over a two-year period. So we will be able to accept that, that money. And what we're going to do with that money is to purchase a map. We're working, as I've told you before, we're working with AGU and the Thriving Earth Exchange, and they've provided us some scientists to illuminate the science, the citizen science that's going on in Lake Forest Park. Because we're a nonprofit, we're eligible for nonprofit funding for the Esri map mapping program. So we will, we're in the process of going through all those steps to get the Esri, which is an incredibly powerful mapping system where you put the map on the bottom and then you can create story maps. So our notion is that we'll get a touch with this money we got from Dambowski. We'll create, we'll purchase a touchscreen TV that the scientists will help us create the the background, the, you know, website that projects up there. And we're going to start with fish and salmon because that seems so Lake Forest Parky. So everything's going to be like first part, but those are the ones that we are we think we'll try it. The notion is that people walk by and they touch the screen and there'll be a certain number of overlays. There'll be, we think, we hope the streams and fish, but we hope canopy, we hope temperature, weather. And so that people can play around what's happening in my location. And we're trying to figure out how also the people can engage in each of those. We are really concerned that we work collaboratively with the city. I know the city is working on some GIS projects and this seems like a really nice fit for collaboration. Because we think, you know, emergency, I think emergency management is probably one of these things that we put up there because it's, people come to third-place comments to talk about those things. But we want to figure out and make sure that as we're moving forward, we're collaborating with the city in order to provide for our residents adequate and interesting information about climate and how to become a resilient community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate the update. The mural is amazing. The hub is fantastic. Bryce James, we're moving on here. Since we're talking, you have listed levy again.
And talk about levies, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll modify.
It's state law.
Love state laws. Thank you. The topic I'd like to discuss is a city ordinance from two thousand sixteen eleven thirty-four, which is under municipal code two dot two-two dot O two O. Related to anytime you have a project of five or more years, we are to have a citizen committee. This would include like the roundabout and things like the levy, which I'm not going to talk about, but any or any program more than five years should have a citizen committee. And I'm concerned that that's not happening. And it's taking projects like the roundabout seven years to get done. Where if we look at what the work, say, Core did in the letter, most of you signed for the letter to Sound Transit, that was a great example of how it works. I'd love to see us go back to what is in code and follow that on longer-term projects. So that would be number one. I think it's also important to look at internally, why are things being rushed to the last minute? Why would something like the roundabout take seven years? A lot of things change. Are we sure after seven years at an increase of over eight million dollars? Is that still the best solution of doing, say, a roundabout or light or whatnot? What would change in that dynamic? And I think rushing things at the last minute, getting, you know, three days, four days to make a decision isn't a prudent way of going, having to waive the three-touch rule. So I'm concerned about where that handoff is being taken place. A lot of time the council members don't have time to really make a prudent decision, especially after something that long. I would really encourage you to look at the internal workings of where are these handoffs of data, of information is being exchanged so that we can all have our time to make a more prudent decision. So those are the two things I would love to see happen here on Lake Forest Park. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bryce. Appreciate your comments very much. Okay. With that, we're moving on to Nate Herzog. Nate, welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. My comments will be limited to the scope of city communications concerning Proposition One and not the merits of the measure itself. I think if you were to ask some of those with whom I served alongside up on that dais, and some of them are still around, or to ask city staff that I worked alongside for those eight years, some of them are still in our community. One of them's right back there. They would say I was nothing, if not fair. It may not sound like I'm being fair tonight, although I assure you I'm trying to be. I'm disappointed. I hate saying that. I hate saying that about the city government I was once a part of. But the actions of the city administration concerning communication about Prop One have been disingenuous and quite frankly dishonest. I spoke to you all on July twenty-fourth during public comments and several pages detailing how the figures were wrong. In early September, the Office of the King County Assessor released figures showing a ten-point-two percent increase in median assessed value in the city. So why is it that when I received this postcard, which was printed a month after those numbers came out, does it use the twenty-twenty-four figure of nine hundred fourteen thousand? It's now over a million. Proposition One will cost more than what the city is saying. Why does this say the average property will be charged two hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents annually? First, the number is wrong. It's more than that. And second, even if it were correct, it's not. That would be the year-one figure. No mention of the allowance for inflation. This is completely false. If this sort of thing occurred in the private sector, it would be investigated as potentially fraudulent. And where is Liz Loomis on this? We hired a consultant, paid her one hundred thousand dollars for one year to work. What? You know, a handful of hours each week? The council should be outraged that after a twelve-month contract nonsense like this gets produced. And she must just be oblivious because how is it that a guy like myself who's been out of municipal government for twenty years can find an heir? But she, who does this every day for a living, cannot. This is what LP City Government finds it worthy to spend money on, false information that gets distributed at our expense. What is taking place from this administration is Trumpian. And I can't believe that I'm saying that here in LP. I don't think it's funny, Your Honor. You're producing.
You've called me a liar, sir.
I've seen you're producing false information, Your Honor.
Continue.
The heirs are still on the city website right now. I checked ten minutes ago. Mayor French and Mr. Hill, I've been leaving voicemails and sending emails for months and haven't gotten a single reply. Well, we could have discussed this. That speaks volumes right there. I wonder if you know this is inaccurate or not. I don't know. Council members, you are on receipt of my emails of the past two days. You are the legislative body that designated checking balance on the executive. I hope that you take this responsibility seriously and deliver a message tonight that this is unacceptable at any level of government, be it federal or city. Voters deserve a fair and honest election, and we aren't getting it. Thank you for your time.
Good. Moving on. Anyone else in the public would like to make a comment? Very none. We're closing public comment. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time. Okay, we're moving on, everyone. First of all, we're going to start with something very positive, recognizing November eleventh as Veterans Day. Councilmember, excuse me, you're doing that. I apologize. Deputy Mayor Ferzoni.
All right. So it gives me pleasure to read this because my brother is a veteran and I know that there are many veterans who live within the boundaries of Lake Forest Park as well as the United States. Whereas Veterans Day is observed nationally on November eleventh as a legal public holiday to honor and thank all veterans who served in the armed forces in wartime or peacetime. And whereas Veterans Day was originally known as Armistice Day, which signified the signing of the armistice on November eleventh nineteen eighteen, ending the First World War. And whereas President Dwight D. Eisenhower proclaimed in nineteen fifty-four that Armistice Day would be known as Veterans Day and would solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom. And whereas President Eisenhower further proclaimed that Veterans Day presents all citizens with the opportunity to re-consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the City of Lake Forest Park to hereby proclaim November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the legal commemoration and observance of Veterans Day and encourage all citizens of the City of Lake Forest Park to acknowledge and thank those who have served our country in the armed forces. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Very important to recognize our veterans. And moving on, recognizing November twenty twenty-five as Native American Heritage Month. Vice Chair Goldman.
Yes. Thank you. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is recognized annually to honor indigenous cultures, histories, traditions, art, and achievements. And whereas, in the face of broken treaties, violent displacement, and genocide, Native Americans have persevered and continued with a remarkable strength, resistance, resilience, and self-determination. And whereas, Native Americans, including local Duamish, Snoqualmish, Snohomish, Tulelip, and many others, have been protectors and stewards of our natural resources and environment since time immemorial. And whereas, the City of Lake Forest Park values the many contributions made to society by native people in technology, science, philosophy, the arts, and especially our local indigenous volunteers and leaders. And whereas, the City of Lake Forest Park recognizes that we must work to combat the impacts of discrimination and racist policies on native people, past and present, and eliminate inequities stemming from colonization. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the City of Lake Forest Park to hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-five as Native American Heritage Month and encourage all residents to learn more and support the work of native people and organizations signed this twenty-third day of October, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Appreciate that. We're moving on to presentations. Director Hoffman, we have the pleasure of Cascadia Consulting Group Conference of Plan Amendment Regarding Climate Element. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director, City of Lake Forest Park. It is with pleasure that we are bringing a draft climate element to City Council starting tonight. Heard a lot about it. We have a formal presentation, two guests from Cascadia, as well as the Planning Commission Chair, Sam Castick. And just for the record, I'll mention a few things. I'll try not to step on items in the Cascadia presentation. We'll start that shortly. But what is this? This would be a presentation bringing the climate element, goals and policies, a resilience and greenhouse gas reduction sub-element, collection of policies and goals to you for adoption. The, I'd be remiss to not mention that this is made possible by the Department of Commerce, but mostly the adoption of the climate. Oh, I always get this wrong. Climate Commitment Act, I believe in twenty twenty-one. That made funding available for cities to do this. Cities in King County under the Growth Management Act do not need to do this till twenty twenty-nine. That first round of funding was sufficient enough that cities were able to apply and get this. Lake Forest Park was lucky to get that. That's why we're pursuing this now. This is separate from our ten-year periodic update that ended last December. We've been doing that this element through the, through the end of that effort and all of this year. It started with CPAT. What is CPAT? The, the Climate Protection Advisory Team for the first part of this year took this draft of this with Cascadia with the grant funds. That was given to Planning Commission over the summer. Last week, they held a public hearing, made a recommendation to the city council to approve this. And the Planning Commission has done with their work. CPAT is disbanded. The game forward is a presentation tonight. We have a noticed public hearing scheduled for November thirteenth. We have two other elements of this review that are not completed yet. This week I did the SEPA determination of non-significance. The sixty-day commerce review period has to end. But after the thirteenth, those will end, and as soon as November twentieth, this would be available for council action. The three documents in your packet reflect the current draft of the element. The first one is the policy memo, which describes each of the policies, how we got here, and some comment. It's supported. It's not going to be part of the ordinance. Volumes one and two are the adoptable documents. The third document is the engagement summary. So while those have been consistently updated from when staff started to CPAT to Planning Commission, now to City Council, those are supportive documents. One last thing that was emailed to you was a transmittal letter from the Planning Commission. We also put that in paper before you on the dais. And with that, I will let Cascadia, Maddie and Alexandra, give their more formal presentation and sit down.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Director Hoffman. Let's do a quick check since we're in the interactive part here. Can everybody online, including our friends and colleagues, can you hear us okay? Ellen and everyone, Maddie and Ashton. Okay, just want to make sure you can. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please lead off. I can't quite see from Cascadia who's leading here.
Hi there. I'm Alexandra. I'll, I'll kick us off and I'll pass to Maddie in a moment. But yeah, as I, as I mentioned, my name is Alexandra. I work at Cascadia Consulting Group and I've had the pleasure of working with Mark and the Climate Policy Advisory Team over the last year. But Maddie, do you want to do your intro?
Sure. My name's Maddie Seibert. She/her, I'm a senior associate at Cascadia and along with Alexandra have been leading the consultant side of the climate element while Alexandra led pieces of engagement and the greenhouse gas emissions inventory coordination. I led pieces related to the vulnerability assessment and policy development.
Great. Okay. And then are those slides coming through for folks?
Thank you. You bet.
Great. Excellent. Well, thank you, Mark, for, for that introduction and we'll do our best to not reiterate what you, what you've shared there. But I just want to say thank you all so much for having us. We're really pleased to be here tonight. We, our goal here is to provide a very brief and high-level introduction to the climate element process and share an overview of the review draft of the climate element. We'll save plenty of time for your initial questions and reactions and comments at the end. Just have maybe ten minutes of slides here. So I'll start with a brief overview of the climate element. So in twenty twenty-three, the legislature amended Washington's Growth Management Act through House Bill eleven eighty-one and the resulting GMA requirements newly tasked cities and counties to plan for reductions in greenhouse gas emissions and enhance community resilience to the adverse impacts of climate change. And as required by law, Lake Forest Park's climate element includes both a greenhouse gas emissions reduction and a climate resilience sub-element. And this climate element is informed by data and community engagement. It is integrated with other city plans and comp plan elements. It's supported by communities, city staff, and hopefully decision-makers such as yourselves. And it represents a clear, feasible path forward to implementation. And we, we launched this climate element process back in October of twenty twenty-four and completed a number of technical analyses to support the development of the climate element. And Maddie's going to share a little bit more about those, but I'll share at a high level. Our team conducted a policy audit of the current Lake Forest Park comprehensive plan as well as ten other policy documents. And we looked for gaps and opportunities to incorporate climate change considerations. We assessed key climate hazards facing the city and we identified climate vulnerabilities facing both Lake Forest Park community as well as physical assets and infrastructure. We evaluated travel patterns and sources of vehicle miles traveled within Lake Forest Park, including from residents, visitors. We assessed the greenhouse gas emissions that the city and community contribute, and we projected future emissions. And then throughout the project, as, as Mark mentioned, we engaged the Climate Policy Advisory Team. We also worked really closely with Mark and city staff. And we worked with the, the Lake Forest Park community through a survey with over five hundred responses and in-person open house and interviews with youth. And then lastly, we pulled this all together into the review draft of the climate element that's in your packet. And the City of Lake Forest Park climate element includes both, as I mentioned, a greenhouse gas emissions reduction element and a climate resilience element. And the emissions reduction sub-element has five goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and address vehicle miles traveled. And the resilience sub-element includes four. And Maddie will speak a bit more about those in a moment here. And then lastly, as I, as I mentioned, Mark mentioned this earlier. The meeting packet does have a bit more detail. So we've got the full climate element as well as a separate policy development memo that outlines not only the full policy development approach and summary of recommended changes, but also additional detail about the individual policies, including rationale and anticipated co-benefits. So both documents in your meeting packet are redlined and the original document reflects the draft that was submitted to Commerce back in June, and that document incorporates the Climate Policy Advisory Team input directly. So the redlining indicates changes that were made as a result of Planning Commission feedback and our final public comment period. And with that, we'll pass it to Maddie.
Wonderful. Thank you. We wanted to share a brief overview of the analyses that went into the climate element to provide some context for the policies in front of you. And as it's noted in the climate element document, all of these technical analyses and their supporting materials are available on the city's website. So if you're interested in digging a little bit deeper into the details or the methodologies that's available online. The first one we'll run through are the greenhouse gas inventories, which measured community-wide and municipal operations greenhouse gas emissions. So we completed those two types of inventories. We completed community-wide inventories for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. The community-wide inventories include emissions from residents and visitors from various activities, including transportation, heating and cooling of buildings and solid waste disposal. So if you're looking at the chart on the left, you can see that transportation in green was the highest source of emissions across all three inventory years. And emissions from buildings, which is the orange section, was the second-largest emitter across all three years. We also conducted a city operations inventory for twenty twenty-three, which included the city fleet, refrigerant use, solid waste disposal, and electricity use in city-owned or operated facilities. And there, again, you can see in green that transportation was the highest emitting sector with the city's vehicle fleet responsible for seventy-one percent of total city operations emissions seen in the chart on the right. Great. As part of our analysis around reducing greenhouse gas emissions, we worked to complete a detailed travel market assessment and a study of vehicle miles traveled. What that showed us was that the majority of trips in Lake Forest Park are inter-jurisdictional, meaning that trips either start or end in Lake Forest Park and include a neighboring city. Over eighty-five percent of all vehicle trips are inter-jurisdictional, so that's a dominant contributor to total VMT. We did not analyze vehicle miles traveling through Lake Forest Park that didn't start or end in Lake Forest Park. Our assumption is that neighboring jurisdictions are conducting similar analyses of vehicle miles traveled, and this would capture trips that start or end within their jurisdiction. So avoiding overlap there. We also, turning to the resilience side of things, we identified historical and projected climate impacts facing the city. This was an important foundation to understand the city and community's vulnerability, so exactly what those climate change risks looked like. And to understand where policies are needed to protect people, ecosystems, and infrastructure. So we identified four primary categories of climate impacts, which were warming temperatures, wildfire and smoke, drought, and precipitation and inland flooding. When we talk about warming temperatures, we're talking about higher annual average temperatures, but in particular, what we're thinking about is high temperature increases during the summer months, so hotter summer temperatures, more heat waves, hotter overnight temperatures. When we think about wildfire and smoke, we're thinking about wildfire risk, but we're also thinking about regional wildfire risk that results in increased smoke and poor air quality and the community members that that affects. For drought, we're thinking about declining summer precipitation, which leads to more frequent, longer, and severe regional droughts, implications for water availability, and for precipitation and inland flooding. We're expecting increased flooding due to more frequent and intense extreme precipitation events, particularly during the winter. Using that foundation, our vulnerability assessment then looked at specific assets within a few categories to understand the degree of climate-related hazards they're likely to face and what the impacts are likely to be. For example, within the transportation assets we looked at, we overlaid the assets, which included roads, bridges, bus lines, with maps of landslides, flood zones, and areas with higher-than-average land surface temperature. Then we considered the likely impacts of those climate hazards. So this was largely a qualitative assessment using the quantitative mapping approach to see the spread of climate impacts across the city to understand the sensitivity of these different assets to the climate hazards they are currently and will be in the future exposed to in varying degrees. So we use that information to understand which climate hazards pose the biggest threats to each asset and to understand an overall vulnerability rating within each of these categories. So you can see our, our categories of assets and our main takeaways in the table on the slide. Transportation sector and economy and water, transportation and economy being one sector, and water resources being another, came away with a high vulnerability rating. The other two sectors, critical facilities and community resources and housing, have medium vulnerability ratings. The key risk across sectors vary. For some, it was flooding. For some, it's landslides and flooding. For some, it was flooding. For some, it's landslides and flooding. For critical facilities, it's really mostly about heat. And we've included maps of the top hazards within each sector in the climate element document as well. We also conducted community engagement throughout the development of the climate element. We did a community survey that received more than 500 responses, interviews with youth, an in-person open house, and an online public comment period. What that showed us is that wildfire, smoke, extreme heat, severe storms, and flooding are the top concerns among Lake Forest Park participants in the process. Many have already experienced impacts to their health, property, and/or way of life due to climate-related events. Community members identified improving transportation options as a top strategy for reducing emissions in the city. They strongly support protecting natural ecosystems and preserving tree canopy, and they wanted to see leadership, public education, and opportunities to stay involved. I also wanted to quickly summarize some of the themes that we heard from Planning Commission. These are echoed in the transmittal that you've all received as well. So what we heard from the Planning Commission was wanting to right-size the policies for the Lake Forest Park as a residential community and the feedback received from community members. The final public comment period aligned with the time period when we were meeting with Planning Commission. So they had the opportunity to consider some of the feedback we heard from folks directly and make recommendations to incorporate it. We heard from the Planning Commission that they wanted to avoid policy recommendations on matters that were beyond the city's reasonable control. And they wanted to tailor policies so that they would not be misinterpreted to suggest the city would take away residence rates or disproportionately impact low-income or underrepresented populations in the community. And we really appreciated that emphasis on equity as well. And the Planning Commission had questions about air travel emissions data and the inclusion of air travel emissions in the greenhouse gas inventory. We've added some explanatory content into the body of the climate element in response to see specific feedback from Planning Commission. Since we won't go through it line by line here, you can also reference your meeting packet. As Alexandra mentioned, it's redlined, and all of those changes reflect feedback from the Planning Commission and how they considered the feedback from the final public comment period as well. That brings us to our review of the climate element. As a reminder, here are the materials in your packet. It's these two documents as well as the engagement summary. In the next few slides, I'll give a short overview of the nine policy goals in the climate element. We'll start with the resilience goals and then cover the greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals. I won't delve into the individual policies since those appear in the packet and can be quite lengthy, although they are available for reference. So I will aim to cover the main points of our rationale and priorities and the way that we've designed the goals and policies. Although, we'll be happy to dig into the details of each policy and questions if you'd like. The meeting packet does have quite a bit more detail. In addition to the full climate element, the policy development memo outlines our approach to developing policies, the steps we took along the way, a summary of recommended changes for some of the policies included in the current comprehensive plan that we've recommended amending, and additional detail about individual policies, including the rationale and a set of anticipated co-benefits. Great. And we'd be happy to dive into the specifics. So with that, I'll dive into the resilience goals. So we determined four goals for the resilience sub-element. Goal one is to enhance community resilience to wildfire, smoke, and extreme heat by strengthening infrastructure, public, and emergency services, and natural areas to reduce impacts on residents, workers, and critical services. The goal here directly responds to Commerce guidance to address hazards measured in the vulnerability assessment. We've combined heat, smoke, and wildfire here because they affect many of the same communities and come with many of the same levers to address them. So the policies here do reflect what we found in the vulnerability assessment, that there are some areas really more exposed to heat than others. There's a high risk of regional wildfire and a need to prepare for periods of low air quality. The policies here focus on education, cooling infrastructure, protecting habitats, and resources for residents so that they're safe during periods of heat and smoke. Goal two is to advance environmental justice and community well-being by prioritizing equitable climate policies, inclusive decision-making, and access to healthy, resilient environments for all residents. And this goal responds to Commerce guidance to prioritize environmental justice. So here, we assessed policies related to community well-being and environmental justice in an audit of policies that we did as an initial step in this process. That raised a few opportunities. So here, we were looking to fill a few identified gaps. So here, we wanted to make sure to really put people first and think about community health and well-being from a climate lens. So the goal is to protect public health and strengthen the community's capacities to adapt and thrive. When we think about community or environmental justice, we're following the Heal Act's definition and thinking about meaningful involvement of people in climate-related policies and implementation, reducing harms that disproportionately affect some areas or communities, and distributing resources equitably. So we've included language that aligns with existing statutes and state guidance around equity. For example, the terms vulnerable and overburdened communities align with the Heal Act and Growth Management Act definitions. There are lots of other policies in other places in the comprehensive plan that also encourage quality of life for residents and community vitality. So here, just really thinking through a climate lens. All right. And goal three is to protect and preserve and protect the Lake Forest Park water resources by advancing drought and flood resilience. These policies focus on water conservation across the city, green infrastructure and low-impact development, flood resilience planning for critical infrastructure, and sediment control to minimize the impacts of landslides and wildfires on water supplies. So we acknowledge that there are quite a few steep slopes in Lake Forest Park. Goal four is around strengthening emergency response systems to climate hazards by improving coordination, infrastructure, and community preparedness. And this goal reflects that key climate impacts facing the city may create emergency conditions and may require specific planning to identify at-risk areas, manage waste after extreme events, prevent impacts from power outages, and communicate in real time to community members about specific climate risks such as air pollution. Heading into greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals, and there are five here. The first one in this sub-element is to reduce emissions from buildings by supporting low-carbon building energy sources and energy-efficient building design and retrofits. So this goal responds to the greenhouse gas inventories that we conducted and gave a summary of a few minutes ago. Some of Lake Forest Park's largest emission sources already are buildings and natural gas, and this is likely to continue into the future, based on what we've modeled about future population growth, the impact of state and regional policies. So this policy or goal really aims to support building energy efficiency and renewable energy. There's some support for building electrification, which refers to switching natural gas infrastructure to electrical infrastructure. But Ballot Initiative 2066, which was passed last year, prevented us at the time of drafting from discouraging natural gas use explicitly or mandating a transition away from it. Goal six is to promote and enhance alternatives to single occupancy vehicle travel. This goal is also informed by the greenhouse gas inventory and vehicle miles travel analyses, which showed us that on-road vehicle emissions are significant. It also responds to Commerce's requirement that climate element policies reduce vehicle miles travels within a jurisdiction. So these policies that we've presented within this goal are all enabling policies to encourage residents to walk, bicycle, and use transit more often through collaborating to expand public transit access, creating a multimodal network plan, implementing mixed-use zoning, and connecting biking, walking, and transit infrastructure via mobility hubs. The set of policies does not include disincentives as a result of feedback from Planning Commission and the community. Goal seven surrounds facilitating a transition to electric vehicles by expanding charging and education. So this is a way, besides vehicle miles traveled reduction, to further address transportation emissions. So it's aimed at encouraging a community-wide transition to electric vehicles, transitioning city vehicles to electric vehicles as well as feasible, and supporting a transition to electric equipment among the city and community. Goal eight is to promote development that advances climate planning resilience and greenhouse gas emissions reduction. So this looks at the role of development and land use to encourage sustainable transportation and efficient energy use. Here, we're looking at fostering transit-oriented development and mixed land use zoning, reducing development costs, and improving housing affordability, and incentivizing developments that use clean energy or reduce energy consumption. And finally, number nine, the goal is to reduce waste generation and increase recycling and composting. This addresses the role of waste and emissions, and particularly recognizing the outsized role of organic waste and construction demolition waste. So focusing on reducing generation and disposal of high-emissions materials via outreach and support for composting at homes and businesses. We're also considering, we're encouraging the city to consider creating a food rescue and/or food waste prevention technical assistance program to align with the state's goals and the Washington Organics Management Law. And these actions will align with the state's goal of reducing organic material in the landfill 75% by 2030 and beyond. And that brings us to the end of the policies. Great. Next, our team will incorporate feedback from city council and hopefully adopt the climate element towards the end of this year. So we're looking forward to hearing your feedback, your thoughts, and your questions.
Colleagues, questions or comments? Thank you for the excellent presentation. This is a culmination of a lot of work. Many thanks to Director Hoffman and our friends at Cascadia. I'd like to open up for questions. Councilor, good.
My question is, with all of the work that's gone into it, has, obviously, there's goals and measurements going into this. Does this include the amount of trees that are going to be removed by sound transit?
We have not addressed the tree loss from the Sound Transit project. No. It's, we did, did we include tree inventory in the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, Alexandra? I think we did. But it was about existing trees in the city rather than any planned removals.
And staff will just add, Sound Transit has not submitted any official application for any project at this point. So it is not contemplated in this document. Overall, tree canopy, tree policy documents supporting community forest management and so forth are very much part of this. And Drew Epping, while she was here, was that feedback to Cascadia.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Colleagues, other questions for our friends at Cascadia? Vice Chair Goldman?
Yes, thank you for your hard work, along with the Planning Commission and CPAT. I remember last year when we were doing the bulk of the comp plan that we had some comments from the state. Have we received or are we expecting any comments from the state regarding the climate element?
Thank you. We don't anticipate any. We didn't ask for expedited review. I believe that ends November 16th, which is a Sunday. Nobody's indicated the need for any additional information or questions of staff. So I don't anticipate any comments like we received for the overall periodic update. We could not take action before that 60 days expires, but we're not contemplating action prior to that.
Deputy Mayor Ferratoni?
Just want to first thank you all, both the city staff and citizen committees, and basically Cascadia for an amazing piece of work you've put out. It's so well laid out. It's so clear. And one of the things that I love about the redline document is that you could see where the debates were going on. And it was, yeah, I'm waiting to hear some of the details of that. But nevertheless, a couple of the questions I have are kind of on a technical level. Given that I'm going to be at the King County, well, the K4C elected officials' work session tomorrow, and having to answer this question, I'm going to ask you. How do the greenhouse gas emissions estimates that you have for the, since 2019, compare to the K4C greenhouse gas estimates?
I'm gonna, look at Maddie. These were done at the county level, having been at those K4C meetings for the last, I don't know, eight years. They match. These, this inventory was done specific to the City of Lake Forest Park. Cascadia is a specialist in the field. Specifically, I'll call out air travel greenhouse gases. Those are done at the K4C level, King County, with that group. And this effort is specific to the City of Lake Forest Park.
No, I appreciate that because, of course, it's nice. You know, those of us who basically work in the sciences on the panel here really appreciate reproducibility of results. So it's really nice when there's an independent estimate that shows pretty much the same numbers. It gives me more confidence in the whole process. So thanks.
And the staff's takeaway is it's very consistent, having sat through all those meetings.
Thank you.
One of our goals throughout was consistency with the K4C methodology. So it's a good intentional effort to include the same categories and similar data sources when they weren't available locally.
Thank you, Maddie. Councilor Lebo?
Thank you. I want to express the appreciation for the excellent work by Cascadia and recognize the very thoughtful and engaging discussions that the Planning Commission had and that we're fortunate to have Sam Castick here this evening for his leadership on the Planning Commission and your predecessor Ashton McCartney. The Planning Commission, as a group of volunteer citizens, does an absolutely fabulous job of bringing this together. And it's really a pleasure to sit at the meetings and hear the thoughtful conversations that go on. And thank you, Director Hoffman, and the other staff for your contributions to making this all possible.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilor Lebo. Colleagues, let's go to Councilor Riddle first, and then I think we've got to everybody, and then back to you, Vice Chair Goldman.
I appreciate the kind of looking into the infrastructure piece and connecting that to, you know, emergency management responses and just kind of keeping everything the same. I think we're used to our roads deteriorating during the freeze-thaw cycle. And yet, we're having these heat waves, as we've seen. And I remember, was it the last heat wave where the I-5 just completely buckled from the expansion? So we're going to be facing different challenges, and having some policy guidance in here is really useful. So I appreciate the efforts that gone into giving us some background on that.
Thank you, Councilor Riddle. Vice Chair Goldman?
Did the people online, or I get a second chance?
Ashton or Ellen, I think, just checking and making sure that you're good. I see a thumbs up from Ashton. Ellen, any comments or questions? Okay.
Oh, I was just gonna echo. I don't know if you guys can hear me well. Sorry, my airport. I heard Sam is in the audience. Thank you so much for all the work. And he's extended that to the Planning Commission to know just how much of a lift that is. And really excellent. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ashton. We do appreciate it. Ellen, you okay? Are you questions, comments? You're muted, Ellen.
There we go. No, I just wanted to echo that. I really appreciated that presentation. That was really well thought out and really well done, very well presented. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, council member.
That was it.
Vice Chair Goldman?
Yeah, it's a comment and then a question. So you had mentioned I-2066. I would just point out that the Natural Gas Initiative is currently at the State Supreme Court. They're considering the legality of it. I have no idea what the timing is on that, but if the State Supreme Court strikes it down, then I'd like us to revisit if there's language that could be made stronger in response. But that's conditional, of course. And then a question, and this might be a little too in the weeds for tonight. But looking at the redlines, comparing the different versions, overall, it looks like the CPAT and Planning Commission's versions are pretty similar. There's a couple of policies that the Climate Advisory Committee put in, and then the Planning Commission took out. And so I think I would appreciate hearing more about the reason for taking those out.
And two specifically, both related to parking. The first one was pricing. So that one, I recall, it was So that one I recall it was the methodology or the program of a small town implementing a parking pricing and it was removed. Um, the second one, I don't recall the conversation at planning commission. It was struck. I don't think it was specific to, we don't support, support looking into parking, but recent legislation would do that for us, whether it be the mandates and so forth. I, I don't think as a climate policy, um, or goal, uh, elimination of parking or keeping parking was the issue. It was, it was more along what are we going to see in the parking lot or coming soon? Those will be related to the recent legislation and be examined there. Um, but the, the only one I recall is the, the pricing program.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Hoffman.
And we, and we can do some follow up. I, I don't have that second number, but for Matty's sake, if you can call out CE eight point three.
You're exactly right.
Is that the second one?
Good memory.
Formerly known as.
So in the, in the policy memo itself, it kind of describes, you know, the, the progression or the why. I don't recall for that one why it was struck or changed at planning commission. But I think, um, for the next meeting or for the near future, I think we can dig into that. Thank you.
Deputy Referratoni.
And, uh, again, um, I'd like to, uh, go, go a little bit into the weeds, but I wanted to point out a really nice thing that if you haven't had a chance to read the actual draft, uh, the, the, then, uh, volume two, I believe, contains wonderful comments from both the environmental club and the interact club at Shorcrest High School. And I was just wondering, um, my little sub question here is how many, uh, yeah, can you tell me what the membership number of those clubs is? Do you recall?
I, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I know we had really good turnout for both of those clubs. I think we had like thirty participants for interact.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the reason I asked that question is of course, because that's a, a order of magnitude increase within about four years of the number of people that are in that club. So this, you know, the, the section's very illuminating and very sobering because of course, that's what next, next generation of residents and leaders are saying right now. And so those of us on the dais right now would be wise to pay attention to some of those comments. So the diving into the weeds question I have for you is, um, I appreciate the fact that you put the flood resilience portion into the report and love the fact that you included the maps. On the hazard maps, do you actually have specific flood areas that can be mapped on there? Because I noticed there weren't anything particularly called out about flood areas, flood prone areas.
It's a, it's a challenge. If you go with the FEMA firm maps, flood insurance rate maps, there's very few indicated spots. Uh, and the discussion at CPAT and planning commission was, let's go beyond that areas of local flooding as opposed to just identified on the firm. Uh, we consider those, receive comment, it still looks pretty light. We know there are places, given the right circumstances, that will flood, that will endanger, uh, sewer, you know, electric homes. Um, but there, there's no formal process to get those onto an exhibit. The only formal process is the firm map from FEMA. Uh, and there's, there's not many hundred year areas.
Exactly. But I, I guess, um, the, the concern that I have is, you know, we'll call out these concerns and then not know where to put resources to address the issue. I mean, it's almost like pornography, right? You know it when you see it, right? In these terms of flood zones. But we all know, we've seen where it floods, but the fact is that it really should be called out specifically so that, you know, people who replace us here will be able to say, oh yeah, they were talking about those areas.
And, and the commission's challenge was get that in words. If we can't produce an exhibit that here's the seventy spots, let's get it in words. And it's the primary drainage is, you know, gravity, topography going towards the lake, Lion Creek, McIlure. So those ravines and, and the steep slopes are those areas. We tried to capture it as succinctly as possible. Um, but more or less staff and the commission was comfortable that we know what we're referring to.
And you did include the tributaries, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that, that's what, that was my concern. Thank you.
And we, we always welcome more GIS resources to and, and find those tributaries.
Deputy Referratoni on points that I'm the longest in the tooth on the dais. The two thousand fifteen culvert project right across the street here removed twenty-one, I believe it was twenty-one houses off of the hundred year floodplain map. And FEMA continues to use this as a model for programs going forward. So, uh, it is important to continue to consider what could happen eventualities with climate change and, and, um, but it's good that we've got some a decade ago, I can't believe that, that we've gotten people off, off of the, uh, flood, the FEMA flood maps. So colleagues, other questions? There's time and I do, absolutely not to put Mr. Castick on, on the spot, but you, you absolutely have the right to come up and, and do your victory dance here, sir. So. You, you all have been doing great work. So thank you.
A few people and, um, respond to a couple of the comments. So of course, we needed to thank, uh, Mark, who helped steer us through all of this and has just been so helpful through all of this as well as uh, council member Lebo, who has participated in all of our meetings and discussions on this and given us kind of, uh, insight from the council, which we appreciate. Uh, the climate policy, uh, advocacy, uh, advocacy team has done great work. We had two members of the planning commission who were on that. The council had really structured that well with people from the tree board and the climate committee. And so that was really well thought out. They were then able to translate for us, uh, kind of what the rationale was. Um, to respond to council member Good on the removal of the trees, uh, that did come up in discussion. Um, we didn't have a specific policy on it, but we had talked about it in the context of the resilience goal, the policy around environmental justice and community wellbeing. So if there were kind of an offset that we got from sound transit to compensate for all the trees that they remove wherever we finally end up, thinking about equitable distribution of those trees, because we do have parts of the community that really have lots of tree gaps. And so we had that discussion. It wasn't formulated in a policy. I think one thing that's important to keep in mind is these are policies and, and Mark has really walked us through that quite a bit. The policies are going to need the implementation actions and that's going to be the work that follows on that city staff needs to do because a lot of the policies aren't measurable or actionable in and of themselves. So that's where the real work, uh, comes next. And one other point, and it's in, in the letter, we did have a lot of talk at the commission about, uh, that transportation data. When you look at that number, it looks like a really big number. A big chunk of that is not vehicle miles traveled. The big chunk of that is just a formula allocation of air travel, really with no connection to the people in our community other than estimates based on income level and the amount of air travel that people at a certain income level take. So we really struggled with how to kind of reflect that accurately. So that is something to keep in mind, uh, with the transportation data. Um, but happy to, happy to help in the future. If there are questions or here tonight about some of the debate or discussion we had, you all have a letter that kind of highlights some of the themes. And I know that, uh, Matty and Alexandra went through some of it as well, and we're very grateful to the Cascadia consulting group for all of the hard work that they did. They were instrumental.
Thank you very much, Director, uh, excuse me, Chair Castick. I have somebody that we need to take care of. They're online, apparently. Uh, moving on, colleagues, any other questions for Director Hoffman or friends at Cascadia or Mr. Castick? Great. Well, thank you, everybody. This is really, uh, a milestone for the community. Really appreciate your work and many thanks to Sam and the whole, the, the whole crew that, um, on, on the planning commission and staff that supported them, Director Hoffman.
Each day rolls on. So starting tomorrow, we're preparing for November thirteenth. We're running into version, conversion confusion, I guess is the term.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and preparation for that packet. We, there was one change at planning commission to figure five noted as figure fifty-five in the draft you have. Uh, adding some data in volume two around air greenhouse, air, air, air travel. Uh, and so that's not in the materials we have today. That's a post-public hearing draft. It's the only change from the public hearing and the recommendation. As we introduce these to you, you're quickly going to say which version, which version? My intent is to not reproduce what's in your packet tonight. So if it's less confusing to do the CPAT version that went to commerce for the sixty day review, and then the version, the red line version that came out of planning commission, um, that we just got this week, you would be able to see better how this progressed. But the danger is you start confusing it with the three documents you have in your packet tonight. So I wanted to telegraph that. Um, we'll answer any questions that you have by email. We'll clarify, but the intent is to give you two draft versions that are, that mean different things. This is what CPAT passed forward. This is what came out of the planning, uh, uh, planning commission public hearing. They're, they're all very similar. So, um, but if in future meetings, we start talking about which version or this or that, that's why. You know, great. Any suggestions we are?
Councilor Lebo.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep up and maybe I need a scorecard. So, um, are those two versions just for information or which one should we be reading as in terms of adoption?
Uh, we will be drafting a document for the next meeting in the packet that will identify exhibit A, which will be the version that came out of planning commission public hearing with the one fixed to figure fifty-five. That's the one we're going to ask for action on. That's it. But some, um, mention was made of, uh, how could we go back in our mind in our review and see what came out of the CPAT? And so that's why we wanted to provide that also. It's pretty clear. There are no red lines. It was their recommendation that went to commerce and it has subtly changed since then, but not perceptibly. So if we don't bring up that there are different versions, you, you might not even notice that there's any revision or change. What we're asking action on at the public here for, for the public hearing and city council action will be the version modified since last Tuesday.
Yeah, Councilor Riddle.
Uh, for kind of version control, is there any way you can just put like for reference only on the other two documents? I imagine they're PDFs and that may be somewhat easy to do.
In their titles, I could put that and put CPAT recommended version, something like that. That title would tell you what point in time this year that particular version came out. They're all very similar.
Something as easy as for reference only would be awesome because again, I don't know if CPAC is coming out before or after this. You, you have that like timeline in your head and I don't. So just so if I accidentally pull up the wrong PDF and I can see a big red for reference only, then I just don't have to think. I can just understand. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Any other questions for Director Hoffman or our friends at Cascadia or for Mr. Castick? Okay. Thank you, everyone. This is huge, really, a major milestone. Really appreciate it, Sam. Yeah, thanks so much. Okay. Thanks to our friends at, at, um, Cascadia. Appreciate. Have a great evening.
Thanks so much.
All right. Um, with that, we are, thank you, everyone. We're moving on to the consent calendar. I've entertained a motion for adoption.
So moved?
Second.
And moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Yes.
I just, I just, nothing, nothing I want to change, but I, I just wanted to call out the specific last item on the consent at agenda. I want to really think, thank the King County Master Gardeners Association.
Oh, yeah.
As well, as well as our volunteers in this city, Linda Holman, who's the leader of them. And so really nice job, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Absolutely. Give them huge props. They've been working on the fall gardening and doing all sorts of wonderful things. And, and Linda is a tour de force as we all know. So thank you for that. All those in favor of adoption of consent calendar, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? The ayes have, it passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Pardon me. Uh, moving on to ordinances and resolution for introduction referral. Uh, Corey, welcome. Resolution twenty-five, oh, sorry, two zero three six, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement between Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office and the city of Lake Forest Park for development funding of, of the future lakefront park property, also known the, it's RCO is the acronym. We love our acronyms around here, don't we, Corey?
Yeah.
Thank you, Corey. Please.
Yeah. So this is the, um, we were awarded, um, uh, so we applied for this in two thousand four. Um, two different pots of money, the ALIA, um, Aquatic Lands Enhancement Act and Water Access for, um, two different grants. We were awarded the ALIA for five hundred thousand when we first applied. Um, for the water access, we didn't quite make the fully funded. But we found out a couple of weeks ago that they found more money and gave us another five hundred and forty thousand. So, um, this reflects both of those awards from RCO. Um, and we, in March twenty twenty-four, the council passed the concept design that was allowed us to apply for this. Um, so this, and actually this, the extra funds that RCO did, um, give us really does close the gap of our fully funded for construction because we have, um, um, funding sorted out that the, with the King County Parks money coming in for four million and we have some King County Trail funding that we are looking at to apply for that would, um, be the whole funding for construction. So, um.
Thank you, Ms. Mattson. Appreciate that very much. Colleagues, questions for Ms. Mattson on this topic? We've been discussing a variety of these things for years now, actually. But this is the culmination of a lot of hard work by our group. Um, yes, Deputy Mayor Ferratoni.
Yeah, and I can't let it go uncommented that. Thanks for finding that other five hundred and forty thousand dollars. I mean, that is really a remarkable award to the city. So thanks. Um, is there any urgency in passing this?
Um, I would ask to, for you guys to pass it tonight. Um, then I can start working on the grant stuff that we do have to get turned in. Um, so it just gives me more time to start working on things, which would be appreciative, but if it needs to be the next, it's okay.
Colleagues, other questions for, yes, Councilor Riddle.
Half a question, half a comment. I, uh, I noticed that it says here that it, uh, a focus on water restoration and recreation, recreation enhancements is what this money is kind of directed towards. So that would be obviously the, the waterfront, uh, beach area.
Um, the ALIA is really on focused on the enhancement, which that could be the dock demolition. It could be some of the new restoration along the shoreline. Um, so it's, that's a small pocket and what needs to go out down there. So, um, it's, yeah, it'll get used up.
Awesome. Yeah. Sometimes stuff gets, you know, more on the conservation side and this is nice that it's helping us in those active projects that we're doing now.
Yeah. And the water access is a little bit more lenient to where, you know, if it wanted to fund the picnic shelter, that's, um, eligible, but the ALIA is more focused on the water.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for that clarification.
Colleagues, other questions for Ms. Mattson? Colleagues, what's your, what's your pleasure? Deputy Mayor Ferratoni.
Well, um, based on the fact that this is relatively non-controversial, I would, uh, move to waive the three touch rule.
Second.
I moved and seconded to waive the three touch rule on resolution twenty-five two zero three six. Any further discussion? Councilor Riddle.
You know, be, because timing seems to be, uh, useful for this, the, the city as well as the fact that we've kind of gone over these types of project or, uh, agreements before. Um, I don't feel that there's any concern with us moving forward with this after the first touch.
Thank you, council member. Colleagues, any other questions? Vice Chair Goldman.
I agree, and also just emphasizing it's us getting money, not spending money, which to me makes it a fair bit less controversial.
We love getting money. Thank you, council member. Colleagues, other questions? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of suspending the three touch rule on resolution twenty-five two zero three six, please signify by saying aye.
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 Just make sure I got, I got Ellen, Ashton, are you in the mix?
Yes, I.
Okay. Thank you very much. It passes unanimously and moving on to the main.
Okay. So I'd like to move resolution twenty-five dash twenty thirty-six, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement between Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office and the city of Lake Forest Park for development funding for the future lakefront park property.
Second.
Well, 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 let the record show it's, it's Councilor Saunders. So we'll split it up here a little bit. Thank you, everyone. Any questions or comments about, um, adoption of resolution twenty-five two zero three six? Nope. Hearing none, all those in favor of adoption of resolution? Now I will read the whole thing. Twenty-five dot dash, uh, two zero three six, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement between Washington State Recreation and Conserv- Conservation Office and the city of Lake Forest Park for development funding for the future lakefront park property. Please say aye.
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 Any ayes? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you so much, Ms. Mattson. We really appreciate all your hard work on this. Okay, we moving on here. Any other business? Yes, Vice Chair Goldman.
Yes, um, so since we didn't have the cow on Monday, there is one more item for us to discuss. Um, that's the SCA regional boards and committees.
Yes.
Um, there's roughly two dozen of those committees that are available for any of us, but council members and the mayor to apply. There's roughly two dozen of those committees that are available for any of us, but councilmembers and the mayor to apply for. But the rule is if two of us apply for the same committee, our applications cancel out. Like they they won't try to figure out which of us they would rather put on. So it's worth us having that conversation to make sure there's no competition here, internal competition. So hopefully you've had a chance to look over the list of committees and to see if there's any that you are interested in applying for. If there's any that you're currently serving on, I believe you still have to reapply. So I was thinking we could go down the list and people could say which ones they're interested in and we'll see if there's any overlap. Should we?
I think the governance manual says that if two of you want it, you have to thumb wrestle.
Right.
Just making sure. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. Deputy Mayor for a ton.
So yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Goldman. I'd like to continue working with the King Conservation District Advisory Committee. You know, of course, depending on the decision of the voters in November.
Anybody else interested in that position? I'm staying with what I have with my responsibilities with I have multiple meetings with SCA and other things. So I don't have the time for the boards. Vice Chair Goldman.
Yeah, I'm interested in transportation. So there's, I think, the one I would like to apply to is the PSRC Transportation Policy Board. As a backup, there's also the King County Regional Transit Committee. So I would be interested in applying to either of those. Would anyone else want those?
Make sure we don't miss our friends online. Eleanor Ashton, please chime in. Just raise your hand and I I can catch you. Or just blurt out, please. That's fine, too. Okay.
Good.
Sounds good. Councilmember Riddle.
So I think I'm I still have to figure this out. I think I'm reapplying for the healthier here. Trying to figure out where where term limits are ending. My term limit with them ends in April.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how I just got to talk to SCA, make sure we got the right. We have someone in the alternate so that we can transition properly. And I haven't thoroughly looked at the other boards, but I think that's the only one I'm I'm interested in at this point. I'll let the council chair know if I change my mind.
You bet. And and just as if council leadership is amenable, sort of stating the obvious, if if there are other boards that you come across here or not discussed tonight that you would like to apply for, reach out to our friends here and they can do some sorting out how that would work and and once again, there are too many opportunities and not enough of us. So Councilmember Lebo, do you have a specific interest?
Yes, I do want to continue on the I believe it was the the pick. Policies Issues Committee.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Councilmember Good, do you have any interest in any of the boards or committees?
I haven't had a chance to look at all of the the whole list. Where is the whole list?
What's our deadline?
So SCA sent us an email. I think the most recent was October sixteenth. It's reminder applications are open.
Okay, I'll get that.
The deadline is Friday, November seventh, five P M.
That's right. I was thinking it was the first of November, but yeah, it's one week.
But that that is before our next our next council meeting is the thirteenth. And so, yeah, if there's any, by all means, let us know and then apply.
Yes.
Yeah.
I got it here.
And to address Councilmember Riddle.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, it says it includes those serving on boards with a term that expires at the end of twenty twenty five. So if yours expires April twenty six, I guess you don't have to reapply yet, but worth asking them.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and fully recognizing, thank you, Councilmember, fully recognizing too, that some of these boards and committees out there, they they're the vagaries of of cycles of things. And so it does get a little confusing. We've encountered that for a long time. Councilmember Saunders and Councilmember McCartney, do you have any specific interests on boards or committees with Sound Cities Association?
Um, I too. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ellen.
I I too need to have a closer look at the list and then I will. I'll have a look at the list and go over them and I'll let you know.
Thank you. And Councilmember McCartney.
Yeah, sure. Being a short timer was not on a on a previous committee, so I could certainly look at the list and if in the event the position continues, I will take note of what commissions and make sure that it wouldn't be any committees that that were stated in this.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. And council leadership, what would you like timeframe in terms of getting that everybody getting back to you? Review by November one?
Well, certainly by, let's say, November fifth, just to let everything kind of calm down.
Whenever, fair enough. I did. I don't think in those terms, my friend, so.
Yeah, we just really need forty eight hours to turn that around.
Okay, yeah, as long as you have enough time. Does that work for everyone?
Great.
Wonderful.
I'm sorry, which day?
November fifth.
Yeah, so Wednesday, November fifth. Yeah.
But it early is okay, too, of course. So, okay, great. Moving on then, if there's no any other other business. Moving on, council member reports, colleagues, questions, comments, reports, thoughts? Kind of quiet. Okay. Positive stuff. Public work. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Ashton, please. Councilmember McCartney.
Sure. Is this an appropriate time just to give a shout out to the David Burkey event that happened last Sunday?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Perfect. I I think it was really well done and I was I was so happy to see how many folks came out to represent and to hear and just be involved in the community. And so it was a really great event. Glad to be a part of it. And for anybody that maybe missed it, I don't think it was reported. It may have been if a council member knows, but otherwise would really recommend looking at that body of work and then the what the the kids put forth at Lake Forest Park Elementary. It was all very cool then.
Thank you, Councilmember McCartney. Appreciate that. Yeah, did you want to?
Do you want to finish your thought?
No, no, go right.
Okay, and similarly, I have a positive thing to report. First off, kudos to I can't remember our stormwater technician's name, sorry.
Chris.
Chris, Chris Corwell, thank you. I I just blanked on his name. I apologize to Chris especially, but he did a great job of running the Lake Ballenger Forum. It was our turn to do that.
I couldn't make it. I'm sorry.
And he was able to mention his rain rain garden program, which was a very positive thing. Also intriguing possibility of our very own Jeff Jensen, starting a remote egg hatchery site in the McKinnon Creek watershed, which is really neat thing. So more news on that later.
Right, thank you. Any other council member, council committee reports, anything council related? Hey, thank you for that. I will just piggyback on Councilman McCartney's comments about the history of Lake Forest Park event. It was incredibly well attended attended. David Burkey did a fantastic job and it was really insightful and and heartwarming to hear from Lake Forest Park Elementary and the experience with the teacher and Amy Minor, the principal, who talked about education for the kids with the salmon. I'd invite you to you can get your copy of the study that he did through the Shoreline Historical Society. Friend Kenneth was there as well from the director of the museum. It was a really extraordinary. I think we I could have gone on for a couple of hours if if we all had enough time to do that, but it was very well intended, very exciting. We are going to get a sample of that rock from Mr. Burkey, you know, the the Vissletta. And yes, as a matter of fact, I I won't mention the name out loud, but the owner, who's a friend of mine of that property, I I hope he is not inundated by people scuba diving in front of his property with trying to find samples of the rock. But that erratic is very, very interesting. It's it's one of two that I'm aware of in my daily monthly things. There's one that's over near the reservation, the Sox Waddle Reservation. It's just sitting in the middle of a field and it's massive. And this is another one that is as erratics go, they're very large and it's mind boggling that they could have been moved by ice into those places. Couple other things. Right in front of Line Creek Park Preserve the other day, three deer, we had a bunch of stormwater work that was going on on the drains there and I was waiting to go down the street and a six point buck and two, a doe and a fawn came up behind all of us and we're all it was I we have a great picture of it, actually. So Matt and Public Works Crew were like deer, deer, deer. So hopefully, Chief, did we get any reports of strikes on the good? They unfortunately, there were a lot of bikes and people going on the trail. They went up to the trail and then skipped up onto the highway. So hopefully they made it down the transit lane without mishap because you don't see a six point buck in Lake Forest Park very often. As a matter of fact, that's my it's a first for me. I've seen pictures. That's really all I have. The only thing I would say in just in closing. You know, we're all neighbors here. This community was founded on respect for the environment and respect for nature. And and respect for our neighbors. And there are some things that are happening out there right now that gives me pause and I really want to make sure that people stay focused on the fact that we all share common goals of being successful as a community, protecting the environment, protecting the civic services that we have here and 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 making sure that the community is vibrant, successful place. And so I would just throw the caution out there to the people who are being pretty negative. Let's let's not go there. Let's let's take it down a couple of notches, please. And particularly to those people who are who are spreading blatant falsehoods about the city. That is deeply disturbing. And it's not about this election. It's other things, too. Get the facts. If you have questions, please ask them. And I'm sorry if you don't like the answer. The facts are the facts. That's just the way it it is. And and with that, I think it's really important to recognize that the vast majority of this community is still engaged and wants to be civil and wants to be lifting other people up and wants to find creative solutions to our problems. And exemplified by the the great worker, the planning commission and and other volunteer groups, the environmental the environment, environmental, everything else. Deputy Mayor for a ton.
Yeah, and on that note, I wanted to thank the police department for their fabulous work controlling the twenty seven hundred people that came to the No Kings protest and it was, I mean, you know, control is an overstatement of a word, of course. You were basically there and I think everybody appreciated that. So it's very positive. I don't think there were any injuries. I don't think there were any arrests, right? You know, so I think we were doing great there.
Just a little getting wet.
Yes, it's a little getting wet. But then one other thing that I wanted to steal a little bit of Administrator Hill's thunder is we're going to have another positive event up at Horizon View on Sunday, I believe, right? The dedication of our
Is that it?
I think it's Saturday.
It is Saturday.
Saturday.
My apologies.
Yeah.
It's Saturday, yeah, on Saturday at ten o'clock.
Uh, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. I hope to see a lot of you out there because it's a fabulous piece of art, so.
Yes, and it will it will be a torrential downpour. It really will. Bring your wetsuit or your galoshes or whatever you whatever you want. And and on that note, too, a big shout out to the PD. They I've been I'm on a daily basis, three, four, five times, I'm up on the detour route and up around Ballenger Way there. PD, nine times out of ten, we I see at least two patrol cars making the rounds, making sure people are safe, keeping things in check. And the chief and the commanders have done an absolutely outstanding job. A big shout out to Rebecca at in Public Works, too, for helping out there to make sure that the signage is 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 in place and everything else. It's not going to be the thirty first. It's been pushed back to the third again. So they teased us with the thirty first and they're back to seventh, Director Hoffman? Okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, we don't. We don't. It's it's like, if you want to know what the weather is, look outside, right? Sorry.
We're not in a position to look into the contractual work or wash that. We asked for a detailed rationale so that we can better judge what's happening. So if they extend it past the seventh and go to the fourteenth or whatever, that we don't accept just unforeseen circumstances. We cannot communicate that to our residents. We're hoping for by tomorrow, some actual factual information.
Thank you. And on point, Chief Harden and I were up there midweek last week, talking to the project manager, Administrator Hill and the chief and I are going to go up there either Monday or Tuesday to do a full tour and and see what additional things we need to be considered on our side of it. And the good news is that after the event that happened a number of weeks ago with the overwhelming of the water system there, the turbidity and the creek is now clear largely. So it's it's much for for quite some time, according to residents. So I was up there with a couple of residents on Tuesday, I guess it was. And my hope is that we will not have any more issues with now. With that, I will stop blathering on and check with Administrator Hill and see if he has anything he wants to highlight. Oh, darn, sorry.
My apologies.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order, my friends? All right, with that, we're adjourned. We appreciate your time, everybody. Thank you, Ashton. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Take care.
You made it.
I know. I mean, updating.